Full night's workout of all of our council members. So if you all wouldn't mind joining, standing and joining me in the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for invocation tonight, brought by Councilman Thompson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please pray with me. Hail to Christ, heavenly Father, we come before you tonight and we just thank you for the privilege and the opportunity to be able to represent the city and the citizens of this city. Father, we pray that you'll lead and guide us. We ask for your blessing and your presence. Father, we also, as we wrap up this year, we do acknowledge, we thank you for how you have blessed us this past year. We thank you for all the staff, all the first responders, everybody that has been a part of this city that leads and guides us and takes care of us. Father, you have taken care of us through this city. We thank you. In Christ's name. Amen.
Moving on to our first item this evening, which is the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes this evening, the minutes from the November 22nd city council meeting. Okay. We'll go ahead and take an opportunity. Sorry, I neglecting my duties. Go ahead and, and ask if there's any one here that would like to make a statement before the city council about items not on tonight's agenda. Any public comments this evening that you'd like to stand and address the city council? There you go. Thank you very much. It's nice to be reminded, though. I appreciate that. Moving right along to our consent agenda again. Yes. The minutes from the November 22nd meeting, claims for city operations, write-off of uncollected accounts, resolution to write-off uncollected accounts payable warrants, and the license renewals for cereal malt beverage. I would entertain a motion. Oh, I'm sorry. Any, any comments from the citizens concerning those issues? Councilman, anything to be pulled? Staff? Seeing none, now I would entertain a motion. Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
So moved by Mr. Shannon and seconded by Mr. Thompson. Could I have a vote, please?
Stevens?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Mayor, motion passes.
Thank you. On to the new business. This evening, the first item is a public hearing for the 2021 budget amendments. Tilly? I'm sorry. Mrs. LaPlante?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tilly LaPlante, Finance Director. Tonight, we will hold a public hearing for budget amendments for three funds. The Water Fund, the Bonner Springs CID Fund, and the Bonner Springs CID, uh, City Contribution Fund. The Water Fund amendment is for an increase in the budget for BPU water purchases, which were needed. I think we had with, um, the, we had some wells that weren't, we needed to buy from them because of the quality of the water wells. So that and the cost of treatment, alternatively, to treat the water was more expensive, it felt, than to purchase from BPU right now. And the water treatment plant will hopefully alleviate some of that as we move forward. The CID Fund and the CID, uh, City Contribution are all based on the amount of sales tax we collect. We give a portion of that to the develop, developer on the city side and the CID we collect. And the CID fund goes directly to the developer, other than a small admin fee. And so we've collected more sales tax this year than we thought. And so that's the reason for that amendment. We'll need to have a public hearing and then approve the budget amendments.
Very good. I'll go ahead and ask for a motion to open the public hearing for the 2021 budget amendments, beginning at now, uh, 7:35.
So moved.
Moved and, uh, moved by Mrs. Gurley and seconded by Mr. Stevens. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Anything to add in the public, uh, in the budget amendments? Any other information from the staff?
No.
Nope.
No further information.
Very good. Anything from the citizens? For or against? Very good. Anything from any other staff? For or against? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and make a motion to close the, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing at 7:37.
I move to close the public hearing at 7:37.
Second. So moved by Mrs. Woods and seconded by Mr. Shannon. Questions, concerns, comments from the council?
Nothing here.
Nothing.
Seeing none.
Thank you, Tilly.
Vote, please.
Voting on a motion to close the public hearing at 7:37 PM. Shannon?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Could've done that one by acclamation, too. Didn't. Onto number two, which is to approve the 2021 budget amendments. Nothing to add?
Just that, uh, once approved, that we will file that with the, the county clerk. And then that'll be sent to the state.
Very good. Nothing else?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the 2021 budget amendments.
Second. Moved by Mrs. Gurley and seconded by Mr. Shannon. Questions, concerns, comments, starting down here. Seeing none, I didn't think we'd have any. Vote, please.
Making a, voting on a motion to approve the 2021 budget amendments. Wood?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Thank you. Onto item number three, the 138th Street Improvement Project, uh, concerning KDOT funding agreement.
Good evening. Frank Abart, Public Works Director. Uh, this item is essentially a funding agreement with KDOT to help fund as a grant, I might add. Uh, the proposed work that we're getting ready to do on 138th Street, uh, this includes moving this, uh, to a curb and gutter and three lanes, so that there's a turn lane in the middle from roughly Highway 32 or Gibbs to Morse. This is a project that's kind of been in the mix for, I think, at least a year or two before I got here. So, uh, this is a pretty big step forward. They have, uh, approved the grant funding. My only concern is by the time we get ready to build it, whether it's, it's going to be enough. So I'm, I'm hoping there'll be some Biden bucks to help support, uh, what I'm afraid is going to be a little bit of a shortfall by the time we get there in a year from now. But, uh, time will tell. Nonetheless, uh, it would be great if we could, uh, go ahead and tie up this $3.1 million, $3.14 million, at least at this point.
Very good. Thank you. Anything else to add by other staff?
The only thing I was just going to quickly add, um, the funding sources for this are twofold. One is through the STP program, Surface Transportation Program. And then the other is the Transportation Alternatives Program. To Frank's point, the inflationary costs that we're seeing on construction, uh, as well as the, um, inability to lock people down for more than 15 days, as far as the prices are concerned, um, is something that we're going to continue to monitor. Mark and I will sit on the STP Committee for the Mid-American Regional Council, so that's one thing that we will continue to advocate on that front, is that if they do receive additional funds, knowing that we're not the only, uh, excuse me, city that's going to be faced with these, these types of, um, financial issues, uh, if they could reallocate based off of new construction estimated costs. So, again, just want to make sure that we're, um, upfront on that and then also make everybody aware what we're trying to do to hopefully balance that situation.
Good. Thank you. Anything from the citizens? Seeing none. I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with the Kansas Department of Transportation, KDOT, for grant funding for the 138th Street Improvement Project in the amount of $3,140,000.
Second. So moved by Mr. Mackey and seconded by Mr. Thompson. Questions, concerns, comments? And we'll start right here. Ma'am?
I thought it was very well explained. And it seems like it will be such a good thing.
Is that amount let in full at the beginning of the project or is it a reimbursable type of program?
It'll be reimbursed as we expense that. So we're going to have to bear the expense and then apply for reimbursement.
The, um, the project, I think, definitely needs to be done, but out of curiosity, um, does this, do we lock ourselves in and commit that we have to do it? Or if, in a year and a half, if the prices have gone way too high, can we not execute the, you know, can we back out of the agreement?
Right. There, there's no commitment.
Okay, so there's no...
I mean, other than on their part, pay it if we build it.
Gotcha. Thank you.
What is your speculation shortfall or potential? You had vaguely mentioned that.
I'm thinking it's probably going to be, if I guess, this is pure guess today.
I understand. Yeah.
I mean, I've seen price escalations of over 27% in the last six months. I expect that to continue on into the next six months.
Is that due to the BBB or the Build Back Better thing?
I don't know what it's attributable to, but I know supply and demand are playing a big part in this. So, uh, not only are, are things costing more, you can't get them.
Yeah.
We were, I mean, talking to a supplier today that, you know, everything's doubling. And so, uh, I would say you're going to be a couple million dollars short of this by the time we get there. And I'll know more in about nine months when we finalize up what the proposed cost is going to be. And I'm hoping at that point, there's some federal highway funds that are available to shore this up. As the city manager indicated, there's going to be a lot of people in line.
Yeah. Are we able to stage this project so that we can use the 3.1 in its entirety to make sure? And then if there's any ancillary condition to the project?
Well, I don't think there'll be any problem using the 3.1. Yeah.
I, I meant like legally stipulated, is it okay? I didn't know if it was percentage-based or like they only pay, say, 50% or something like that, or if we can use this first.
I believe 20%. I believe we pay about 20 to 25% and the rest is paid from this. Uh, but they only go to a max of 3.1 million at this point with this grant. So anything over that, we would have to cover anyway.
Okay.
The way it currently stands.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
I'm hoping there's some better news in six to nine months, though, on this. Otherwise, there's going to be projects all over the place that are just going to stop.
Definitely.
Not go anywhere. So...
Okay. Well, thank you, sir.
And that won't help the economy either.
That's what they're trying to stop.
Sir? Seeing nothing else? Vote, please.
Voting on a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with the Kansas Department of Transportation for grant funding for the 138th Street Improvement Project in the amount of $3,140,000. Shannon?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Onto item number four, which is a request for rezoning at 546 North 130th for Sandstone Apartments.
Good evening. Mark Lee, City Planner. Uh, this evening, we're looking at a rezoning at, yes, 546 North 130th Street is north of Feldman's, south of vacant property in between K-7 and 130th Street. Applicant is here. If you guys have any questions of them, but we are looking at rezoning the property to multifamily to allow for the construction of, um, 140 multifamily units. Uh, they're connected townhomes, more or less. Uh, be, I think the maximum that was connected was 10 together, and they go down from there. Uh, included in the packet was site plan that they had submitted that showed a potential layout. Uh, there's green space involved, um, some trails that were shown, as well as, I think, some picnic and playground area within it. We requested a traffic impact study be done as part of the approval process, which was submitted over the weekend, uh, sent out for review today. There was a note that, or not a note, but a portion of it that I would like to read to you guys, because that was one of the biggest concerns out of the planning commission public hearing, was the traffic. Um, the quote, or the, the portion says, "In general, acceptable traffic operations can be expected in and around the proposed development. Westbound dual left movement at the intersection of K-7 and North 130th Street can back pass the existing quick trip driveway today. During the PM peak hour, the proposed site would be expected to increase EQ by 10 feet." So the traffic impact is somewhat minimal, as far as the report goes. I guess that'll be reviewed by our engineers as well as KDOT. Um, it goes on to say that, yes, there could be some impact if the concert venue is having something or something along those lines, which we know that can happen anyways. Really, that's all I have on that.
Very good.
Guys, if you have any questions of the applicant, he is here.
Very good. Anything to add? Applicant? Anything from the citizens? Questions, concerns? I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the ordinance authorizing BSRZ dash 02 dash 21.
Second. So moved by Mr. Stevens and seconded by Mr. Shannon. Questions, concerns, comments? And we'll start right here, sir.
I was curious from the applicant, what are the expected rent rates?
These are largely going to be two-bedroom and three-bedroom units. And so, just at a high level right now, we're looking at $1,250 for a two-bedroom, two-bathroom with an attached garage. And then the three-bedroom, two-bathroom units will probably be around $1,500. I would like also to reiterate, they're market rate units, so anyone can live there. They're not income restricted, which was a question at the previous meeting as well.
Cool. Good deal. Uh, what's approximate square footage of them, you know?
Um, they're going to be about 1,200. Plus or minus, we're still figuring out the final floor plans, um, and kind of how they function. Uh, but what, 1,200 average across the twos and threes?
So you guys are about a buck a square foot?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, do you know what build grade quality is going to be? The reason I'm asking is like, I might, I know this...
It'll be, it'll be, it'll be like a smart trim siding product, like we aren't going to go with vinyl siding.
Okay.
So the siding will be, I guess, more, uh, appealing.
And the trim inside the building, carpet, hardwoods?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Full wood. Um, so it'll be kind of that wood, um, not quite like this, but kind of a full wood flooring.
Like the LVTs?
Quartz or granite countertops, stainless steel appliances. I mean, the finishes will be right on par with what you're seeing, um, at North Point's building, uh, building over, um, at the Legends. The interior finishes will be right on par with that.
Gotcha. Uh, incentives? Are you guys looking for any?
Um, I think we would like to explore the RHID program, um, that Kansas offers, um, through Leavenworth County, um, because that's actually where this property is. But...
The properties in Leavenworth County?
Yeah.
Actually not.
Oh, it's in Wyandotte County. I'm, I'm very sorry. You're right. It's the unified government. We're buying it from, sorry, through the county commissioners. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I got, I got some deal merged there.
So it is in Bonner, right, though?
Yes. Yes, it is in Bonner.
Good deal. I'm happy about that one.
Yeah.
I believe that's all my questions.
Yeah.
I appreciate it.
Tonight, we're just focused on the rezoning and ultimately can look at incentives down the road and see if it's appropriate, but...
Gotcha. Okay. Well, thank you. I appreciate it, sir.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry, sorry for the confusion, though.
Hey, now you know you're in Bonner Springs, it's okay.
Anything else? Mr. Shannon?
Well, yeah, he just ducked away, but you can holler from back there for me. Um, the property, um, I just saw from, uh, Sean, the city manager, the, I didn't see it on here, but are you going from approximately right behind Feldman's all the way to State Avenue? Are you buying that whole, that whole picture?
No. Um, no, it's actually a portion of property that's currently owned by the county commissioners of Wyandotte County. And so, um, had initially been working on some projects, um, with the Economic Development Committee over there, um, at which, um, they kind of showed us this property. Um, obviously, it's in Bonner Springs, but we've been working with them for about a year and, um, ultimately, that's how we got to where we are.
Sorry, because I didn't, I didn't see it. So I was trying to, I know that whole quadrant and that, you know.
Just the first set, first property north of Feldman's.
It doesn't even go all the way to the Renaissance Festival entrance. Sandstone entrance, it's not, not that far north.
Thank you.
Ma'am, do you have anything?
I was just wondering, I know you can't give me a specific number, but how, uh, how many residents will that add to? And I'm just thinking of the...
Yeah, so, or, we currently have about 144 units laid out there. And so, I would say 250 is probably a good number. Um, maybe, I guess you'd probably say about two per, two per home, so maybe 300.
Okay. Do I remember correctly, Sean, that that 138th Street is slated for streetlights in the not terribly distant future?
130th?
I'm sorry, 130th, yes.
It's something that we've talked about, identified. I don't think that that was part of any site plan on this. The reality with streetlights are that per our franchise agreement with EverGee, we can actually make that request at any time to add streetlights. The only caveat being that we just have to pay the electric bill. Um, so they're willing to put those things up. Typically, it's just wood posts that they'll put if you want to do a higher-grade aluminum-type finish. That's an expense, too. Or underground wiring, that's an additional expense. But we've looked at it. Uh, again, I think this is something that if you increase the density out in that area, that's certainly going to, uh, warrant a second, uh, conversation about that.
I think sidewalks was part of that conversation also.
Correct. Yeah, that was, um, kind of the, one of the big drivers, which I believe, again, I, I don't think we have a site plan for this yet, but, uh, this would assumably have sidewalk on the portion of 130th Street that it's on as it's being built out as part of the public improvements.
Okay, perfect. I know one of the concerns that came up during the commission meeting was emergency access, and there was some mention about seven highway access, but that is not a possibility. Am I remembering that correctly?
Yes. Yeah.
So the only access will be off 130th Street.
Yeah.
They had actually tried, they had attempted to use, there's an old road right away along there with some frontage, and they had actually put in their plan to allow it for emergency access, but KDOT was kind of, they shut that down pretty quickly.
Is there any concern in emergency access during those high-traffic times when concerts are happening and things like that?
That was discussed in the planning commission. That was actually brought up by the, the citizens, the couple that were here more than the commissioners, but, um, it was kind of concluded, the point was, they have to get into the concert venue anyways if something were to happen or the Renaissance Festival, and they haven't had an issue necessarily yet, so...
Excellent. That answers it. Thank you.
And I think it has two entrances and exits into it.
Yes. Yeah.
But that is, yeah, that helps. Okay. Thanks.
I, um, I know the, uh, that was a big contentious, a bone of contention with the planning commission when they, uh, when they reviewed, a lot of their comments had to do with the traffic issues. And, uh, not that we should not build up there because of that, we just need to make sure we work, find ways around that. Uh, with that said, hopefully at some point in time, as we further, go further north, there'll be more development. Are there any contingency plans to allow for a frontage road, which we may, maybe reduce the number of potential entryways along 130th Street on that west side? So there's more of a frontage road that feeds 130th Street.
We don't have anything in our plans that I've seen that would dictate anything like that.
Okay. I just didn't know if they were going to allow that as a potential, an extra, another way out of their, um, development.
No, KDOT really was like, no, we're not going to allow. They, they, and even though Alex said, we're, we'll lock it, we'll put a gate, we'll put a padlock.
Oh, no, no, I'm not talking about if K-7, but I'm talking about if other developments, they would then be able to have roadways that feed into those other developments.
Uh, some of that will probably be spurred on by traffic impact studies to see what happens up further progressing north. And, and it may be, I don't know about a frontage road situation, but there may be some adjustments or something that happen.
Okay. You can see where the concern is, is do our part necessary to make sure that it doesn't, the traffic up there doesn't become unbearable. That's it. Thank you.
I was just going to mention quick for, for Tom, um, just to remind everybody, we, we have been having ongoing conversations with KDOT about the K-7 plan as it was proposed. Just to maybe give an update on that briefly to help with your, your question, um, they are taking, are planning to take a hard look at, uh, interim strategies for K-7 that are not necessarily what they had proposed, uh, with the overhead bridges and what have you. So I don't have much more on that other than to say that as we see development like this, um, that will, that'll certainly be part of, of that ongoing conversation with KDOT. And if anything, I think, again, having a, a project like this and others is going to help, um, illustrate, I think, our, our points, um, especially when we start to look at, again, congestion and what have you. So just wanted to make sure that, uh, again, you guys were aware of that, that question in mind.
Does this have any connection to Bonner Water, or are you guys going to be using BPU? Do you know? Or Lee, do you know?
It's, it would be Bonner Water.
Yeah. Okay. Just wanted to check on that, too. Thank you, guys. That's it for me.
Nothing else? Vote, please.
Voting on a motion to approve ordinance authorizing BSRZ 0221. Shannon?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Thank you. Congratulations and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number five, a special use permit concerning 231 and 233 West Inslee Avenue. Mr. Lee, again.
Good evening, everybody. Mark Lee, City Planner, just in case you forgot. Uh, this is a special use permit to allow for two duplex units to be built on 231 and 233 West Inslee. The reason for the special use permit is the zoning district they're in, the R1A Special Residential District, allows for certain uses within the core of town, and multifamily is one of those that requires a special use permit.
I went to the area, drove around a little bit, did some satellite imagery as well to look and see what was around the area. There was a few multifamilies down the way, couple, um, single families scattered throughout the neighborhood as well, a church to the north, and I can't remember the other properties. Really, there was, I don't, if I remember correctly, there was no, sorry about that, no conversation really in regards to, um, anything as far as the public hearing portion of it went with the planning commission, so, um, that's, that was really, sorry, I lost my train of thought, but there really wasn't much to this, I guess, in, from my standpoint. Seemed to fit in the neighborhood. Planning commission recommend approval.
Very good.
So two empty lots, um, just north of Inslee.
They've been empty for quite some time?
Yeah.
This will be a nice addition with the duplex, uh, or could potentially be. Thank you very much. Anything from any other staff? Citizens? Questions, concerns? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve an ordinance authorizing the special use permit, SUP dash zero-five dash one.
A second?
So moved by Mr. Thompson and seconded by Mrs. Gurley. Uh, questions, concerns, comment, we'll start down here, sir.
Uh, I just, my only comment is I'm always happy to see infill take place, so.
Looks like these will likely be rental properties, is that correct?
Thank you for the detailed information, too.
Do you know the build quality of the units? Will they be meeting the one-seventy and above per-unit statute?
I believe so. Plans were submitted and have started the approval process already, the building plans, I believe that they were.
So we'll hit the around two-forty, two-fifty?
I don't know, I honestly can't answer that.
Okay.
Per square foot is what you're talking about?
No, the, uh, per unit for single-family homes in Bonner right now, it says a hundred and seventy or above, and I didn't know if that extrapolated into duplexes as well.
Hundred and seventy what or above?
Per unit.
Hundred and seventy.
Per, per, single-family home, uh, a hundred and seventy build quality or above.
Hundred and seventy dollars per square foot, or a hundred and seventy thousand dollars per unit?
A hundred and seventy thousand per unit.
Okay, thank you.
So I was just curious if it was.
Okay. Yeah, they were submitted, yes, yes. I'd have to look and see.
Okay, I, I realize that's a weird question, but I, there's a purpose behind it, so. Appreciate it, thank you, sir.
Anything else?
Nothing.
Sir? No other questions, concerns, comments? Vote please.
Voting on a motion to approve an ordinance authorizing special use permit, SUP oh-five-twenty-one. Stevens?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good, thank you. Onto item number six. A right-of-way use agreement with the Kansas Secretary of Transportation.
Amber Vogon, Assistant City Manager. This right-of-way use agreement is for our welcome and monument signs. We started this process a couple of years ago after we did the Parks Master Plan, and they did a mock-up of, uh, one of the park signs. We had Landwork Studio do the design for all of the signs throughout the city so that they're all cohesive and look nice and branded. Um, so they did, uh, design for the welcome monument signs that you see on the highways, other wayfinding signage, and park signage. Um, after they finished their design, it went to the engineer so that he could put together the bid packets and work with KDOT on their right-of-way use agreement. That's taken quite some time to come to an agreement. We are a bit above the, um, what they allow for signage on, on the highways, so we have a few more than they'd like. So it was a bit of a negotiation process to get all of these, and then we added, so all of the monument signage that you see on the highways, the welcome to Bonner Springs, they will all be replaced with the new signage. We're adding one down at the industrial park that will be a taller sign because it sits down a hill a little bit, so it needs to be a taller one. And then we're adding one, um, out west on State Avenue as you come into Bonner Springs. So those are, those are the two additions, and then the rest are all replacement of those signs, replacing all the park signs and wayfinding signage throughout the city so that you can, it'll direct you to downtown and library and a bunch of different places. So this is, this is the next step to sign this agreement with KDOT so that we can replace the monument signs on the highway, and then we will finish up the bid, bid packet and be able to bid that out for construction.
Very good. Anything else from other staff? Questions and concerns from the citizens? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the right-of-way use sign, agreement with the Kansas Secretary of Transportation for the welcome and gateway signage with unsubstantial changes from city attorney review and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
Second. So moved by Mr. Shannon, or Mr. Stevens, and seconded by Mr. Shannon. Uh, questions, concerns, comments, and I think we'll start down here with Mr. Shannon.
But, when you, um, when you said that we were above the limit, in other words, there's just so many monuments allowed per city, is that, that it?
Yes, they allow one sign per direction on the highway. So, um, on K seven, we would have four, I believe it is, because there's two at our.
Cloverleaf?
Exit, yeah, or Cloverleaf, and then there's one at each end, so that's above what they would allow.
We, but we negotiated.
We worked it out.
Got our way.
Yes.
You smile at them? Thank you, Amber. Nothing.
Sir?
So do we have to renegotiate any time we replace the signs, even if their location is already approved?
Yes, um, we probably would if we're going to keep all of the signs. Uh, originally, we were going to be able to replace what they would allow, and then the two at the Cloverleaf, they were going to have to stay as-is if we were going to keep them, but we managed to get them to agree, to let us replace them.
Okay, thanks.
No, I'm, I'm good.
Did us losing the one sign, uh, as you were exiting I seventy on to Seven Highway, there, near the park sign, or the National Agricultural Hall of Fame sign that was very tall that we used to have on that exit, did that, they, they took a sign from us? We need to remind them during these negotiations that they, they have negatively affected us already.
Yes.
Something that seems to be a common occurrence by the state. I, I don't mean to digress.
Are the signs, the wayfinding signs for downtown, are they one-sided? Or does it depend on their location?
Um, it, I believe all of the wayfinding signs are one-sided, but there may be ones, um, like at, uh, Nettleton and Morse, there'll be several at that intersection pointing in the different directions. And then downtown, the historic Bonner Springs signs, those are one-sided, they'll be replaced at each end of the, uh, each end of Oak Street.
The one that caught my eye was the City Hall Community Center, and I didn't figure out exactly where it's positioned, but I didn't know if it would be two-sided.
That one, I believe, should be, because it, I think it's not here.
I think that one replaces the one that's there, doesn't it? So I think it's going to be a similar setup, um, as what's there currently.
Okay, thanks.
No other questions, concerns, comments? Vote please.
Voting on a motion to approve the right-of-way use agreement with Kansas Secretary of Transportation for the welcome and gateway signage with unsubstantial changes from the city attorney's review and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement. Mackey?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Congratulations, you're good, or. Onto item number seven, the Sculpture on the Move program memorandums of understanding and agreement.
Amber Vogon, Assistant City Manager. This is a program, um, that is based out of the St. Louis area. There's a Creative Communities Alliance that promotes arts in, in the communities. One of their programs is the Sculpture on the Move program. They have several communities in Missouri that participate, and then Spring Hill on the Kansas side also participates. From the people that I've talked with that have seen these sculptures in the communities, they've had nothing but good things to say about them. Um, this gives us the opportunity to have new art in our community in public places every two years if we wish to. So we would need to install a four-by-four concrete pad in any of the locations that we would want to have a sculpture, and then we have, um, a committee, which will probably be the Tourism Committee, that will review all of the sculpture proposals, and we choose the ones that we'd like to see in our city. And then there's a process that we go through for selection with all of the communities. Um, to get these sculptures, we, by agreeing to be in the program, we have to have at least one, but we can, there's no limit to how many you can have. The, the cost to join the CCA is very minimal, I believe it's fifty dollars, and then it's fifty dollars to participate in the Sculpture on the Move program. These sculptures are two thousand dollars for the two years, so one thousand dollars per year to the artist, which is very inexpensive for an art program. Um, the artist would come and install the art. At the end of the two years, they would take the art, they would uninstall it, and it goes back into the rotation, or we would have the opportunity to work it out with the artist and purchase it if we wanted to. Um, but if we didn't, then we would get a fresh sculpture in two years. Happy to answer any questions? Tourism Committee is very excited. They'd like to see this.
Very good, anything else from other staff? Citizens, questions, concerns? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the memorandums of understanding and agreement to join the Creative Communities Alliance and participate in the Sculpture on the Move program and allow the city manager to sign the agreements.
Second. So moved by Mr. Shannon and seconded by Mr. Mackey. Questions, concerns, comments, and I think we're back to starting right here.
Oh, I think it's a wonderful idea.
Have they started looking at locations, or have any?
Um, we did have one suggestion, uh, from Bruce Bezlo, who, and the, the concrete pad over in the Centennial Park that used to be used for marble competitions. He, he thought that that would be a good location for one of them, but I've asked the Tourism Committee to kind of think about locations that they'd like to see them, and then we'll go through the approval process with it.
So there's a four-by-four concrete pad to, to support, but the sculpture itself could be much larger at the top, or?
Oh, yeah, it'll be much, most of them are much taller, yeah. It just has to be fastened down on that.
Um, the, um, are we locked into just a, every two years? Or if we, if we opt into the program, a year goes down the road, and we decided we'd like to go ahead and have a second one? Can we get it at that point in time, or do we have to wait for that two-year cycle?
No, a lot of communities actually choose to, um, do sculptures every other year so that they can have fresh art every, every year.
Gotcha, so they'll have a couple, and then they rotate?
Yep.
Thank you.
Sir? Um, is this similar to the, um, when they had the, the Cows on Parade, or the different art programs that had the cow in many different locations that was painted different ways? Uh, they've done it with other things, I just recall cow mostly.
It's a little similar, I think a, a lot of those were fundraisers, um, for different organizations. This one is more, um, promoting artists and, and getting new artists out there and getting them working with communities.
So each piece of art will be unique?
Yes.
The same art won't be in two towns or two places in our town?
Very rarely that it would be. It definitely wouldn't have the same ones here, and to see one that's just like it, you'd probably have to go over.
That, that's fine, that, that's fine, I, I was just wondering, thank you.
Does it include a plaque that gives the artist's information on it?
Yes, um, part of it is, um, each, each sculpture, you'd have to have a plaque, so those are about forty dollars. Um, and if it's one that has been rotating, then the, the plaque moves with it, so. Unless it's a new sculpture, we wouldn't have to purchase the plaque.
Right. Very good, are there sponsorships available for those?
Yes.
Through the Parks and Recreation Department, or the new Economic Development Coordinator position?
Um, we would be working on it, uh, to, to put it in, in public places, the, they have to go in public places, so, um, there are even businesses that choose to sponsor these. They just have to be outside and able to be visited by the public.
But not in the public, uh, not like in a street right-of-way, but in a public park or a public area?
Right, yep, a yard.
Seeing nothing else? Vote please.
Voting on a motion to approve the memorandums of understanding and agreement to join the Creative Communities Alliance and participate in the Sculpture on the Move program and allow the city manager to sign the agreement. Shannon?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Onto item number eight. Audit contract for twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two fiscal years. Mrs. LaPlante.
Tilly LaPlante, Finance Director. Um, the city went out for bid for, uh, audit for fiscal years twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two. We sent out six proposals as well as posting it on our city website, and we received three proposals back. Uh, Gordon CPA, BT and Company, and Agler, and Gator. Um, those proposals were evaluated, and staff is recommending awarding the contract to Gordon CPA. Um, the two areas were, uh, they ranked higher, as two of their staff members have worked on the city audit in the past, and they were the lowest cost as well. So this would be for, um, this year as well as next year. This price is about half of what we were paying before, and probably a lot of that is moving to the regulatory basis of accounting. And, uh, this pri, these prices that we would be awarding tonight include the single audit, which with getting the, uh, American Recovery Plan money this year, we will be required to have a single audit if you get over seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand. In federal funding, you're required to get a single audit, so that costs, uh, this bid would, has three, thirty-five-hundred in it for that. And next year, with getting the second half, uh, we'll probably be subject to that as well, so. Those costs do include the single audit.
Very good. Anything else from other staff? Citizens, questions, concerns? Seeing none, entertain a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve a two-year contract with Gordon CPA to perform audit services for the city for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two in the amount of eighteen-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty and nineteen-four-hundred-and-twenty.
So moved by Mr. Mackey and seconded by Mr. Thompson. Questions, concerns, comments, and I think we're just going to start down here with Mr. Stevens.
I have no questions, Mr. Mayor.
Incredible experience on this person.
Nothing. Very good, not only incredible, incredible experience for him, but incredible experience for us. Thank you very much. Seeing nothing else, vote please.
Voting on a motion to approve a two-year contract with Gordon CPA to perform audit services for the city for fiscal years twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two in the amounts of eighteen-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars and nineteen-thousand-four-hundred-and-twenty dollars. Gurley?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Onto item number nine, an item which has a lot of ups and downs associated with it.
Don't get up your dajah.
Our Otis Elevator Service Agreement.
Amber Vogon, Assistant City Manager. The elevators at City Hall and the Bonner Springs Police Department are both Otis elevators. Um, they have a warranty, I believe it's a one, one-year warranty on major parts. Um, but we need to have an elevator service agreement with someone, but Otis, because they have our warranty right now, made sense. Um, these, we're recommending, we're recommending the mid-level, uh, service agreement. The low-level service agreement pretty much is just a right-to-call phone monitoring and very basic inspections and lubrications. The mid-level one that we're recommending will cover, um, some parts. It covers the service calls so that we don't have to pay extra. The hourly fee for those calls is, I believe, almost five hundred dollars per hour plus travel. So that's why we're kind of recommending that mid-level. It would pay for itself if we had to call them out. Um, and it's also recommended for medium-use elevators. The, the higher service coverage, um, they, they did cover a little bit more, a little bit more parts, um, but it was quite a bit higher, and with these being new elevators, we didn't feel there was really a need to go with the high-level contract at this time. So this one is, um, three-hundred-and-eighty-nine-ninety per month, or forty-six-seventy-eight-eighty annually. Covers both elevators, and it's a five-year term.
Very good. Anything else? Other staff? Seeing none, citizens, questions, concerns? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the five-year service agreement with Otis Elevator Company and allow the city manager to sign the agreement.
Second.
So moved by Mrs. Gurley and seconded by Mr. Stevens. Questions, concerns, comments, and we'll start down here with Mr. Shannon?
No, nothing, it looks good, thanks.
Dumb question, is phone monitoring literally the phone in the elevator if something goes wrong and someone picks it up and calls for help?
Yes.
Surely they monitor more than one phone?
Yes, but you never stop to think about, he's on the other end of that phone if you have to pick it up.
Well, I've made my comment.
No other questions, concerns? No other questions, concerns, comments? Vote, please.
Voting on a motion to approve a five-year service agreement with Otis Elevator Company and allow the city manager to sign the agreement. Thompson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Motion passes.
We all did get a lift out of that, didn't we?
Yes.
Onto number, item number 10. The Kansas Fights Addiction Act Resolution.
Amber Vogon, Assistant City Manager. This is a resolution to certify costs for substance abuse and addiction mitigation and approves an agreement that we'd sign with the Kansas Attorney General. Earlier this year, the Kansas Legislature passed the Kansas Fights Addiction Act because there are some class action settlements with opioid producers and distributors. There were some cities that went on their own with their own suits against these distributors. We did not. The League of Kansas Municipalities did a group agreement that cities can opt into. That's what we're doing with this. That is the, since we didn't do our own settlement, this is the only way that we would be able to receive funds from this distribution. We are just asked that we have to certify previous or expected costs of at least $500. And I'm sure our emergency services personnel can attest to far more than that in funds that we've had to expend for this reason. Any cities that don't join this settlement, their funds are absorbed back into the distribution and distributed out among all the other cities that have joined. I'm ready to answer any questions.
Very good. Thank you. Anything else from other staff? Citizens? Questions or concerns? None, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adopt a resolution certifying costs for substance abuse and addiction mitigation and approving the execution of an agreement with the Kansas Attorney General.
Second. So moved by Mr. Stevens and seconded by Mr. Shannon. Questions, concerns, comments? And we'll start here with Mr. Thompson. Sir?
Just wanted to say thank you, Attorney General Derek Schmidt and the League of Municipalities. I cannot speak today, but thanks for the opportunity to be able to be part of this.
You may not know the answer at this point, but could those funds, if they're significant enough, be utilized for funding our dare officer or things of that nature?
Yes. That's an allowed expense under the settlement funds.
No. The agreement is good. I approve it. I like the agreement. I do have one comment to make, so hopefully staff will stay on top of that. And that is the fact that 25% of the settlement funds, half of that goes to the cities and half goes to the counties. And you know what kind of issue we've had with distribution of county funds. So hopefully staff will be able to stay on top of it, and maybe we can see a few dollars out of that since we have no unincorporated areas short of Maureen. That's it. I've made my statement.
Very good. Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none, vote, please.
Voting on a motion to adopt a resolution certifying costs for substance abuse and addiction mitigation and approving the execution of an agreement with the Kansas Attorney General. Wood?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Mackey?
With my kombucha in hand, yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Onto item number 11, our Personnel Policy Amendments.
Matt Zayas, Assistant City Administrator. So on an annual basis, staff reviews our personnel policy just to make sure that it remains an effective tool for our organization. We didn't find a lot of items to bring up this year, which is great. It means it is. But a few, we found a few small things. The first has a lot to do with the fire transition that has been going on for the last few months. So I've been working with Deputy Chief Jennings on a lot of this, and it has to do with accruals and capping accrual carryover. Based upon our review of how Edwardsville does theirs and how KCK Fire does theirs, and also, you know, we want to make it as equitable as possible with the other employees in the organization, we recommend the following annual amount of accrual for employees for our 24-hour Fire EMS shifts. And those are eight for zero to four, 14 per month, five to nine, 10 to 14 years, 16 hours a month, and 20 hours for 15-plus. Kind of on that same thread, we looked at, you know, the max that an Edwardsville Fire employee could carry over year to year, as well as KCK, and noted that they can only carry over the amount that they accrue. So I think in Edwardsville, let's say you get 96 hours a year, you can carry over no more than that. One of the perks about Bonner Springs, we have no such cap. But in order to make it equitable with the other employees, we decided to reduce the vacation accrual carryover to 240 and the sick accrual to 480. With that said, we had four employees who had more leave. You know, their leave was beyond that cap. So Deputy Chief Jennings and I spoke with those employees and everybody on Friday and said that on the 24th of this month, pending council approval, we will pay out whatever you have over that cap at your current rate of pay. And all staff in general seemed amenable to that idea. There were a few other small things that we noted in our review of the personnel policy. The first was just a clarification of vacation leave payout. So as it stands right now, if you're an employee, if you leave the city of Bonner Springs in good standing, which is, you know, it's two weeks' notice and just leaving in good standing, you'll have your vacation paid out at your full rate of pay. We added in, we added to that section that, you know, just as a reminder, you do need to leave the city in good standing in order to get that full payout. So just a small verbiage adjustment there. We also cleaned up the definition of a variable employee. This applies a lot to our Fire Department as well because a lot of our variable employees will be those part-time employees who work less than 130 hours a month and less than 1,000 hours a year. So we just, we kind of made that clear in there that a variable employee does need to work less than 130 hours a month and 1,000 hours a year. And the final thing we added, when an employee is injured and they're running low on sick leave, their manager, supervisor, or department head can reach out to the city manager's office on that employee's behalf and say, hey, this employee, they got injured outside of work. They're running low on sick leave. Would it be possible for your office to send an email out to staff anonymously and say that, you know, one of our colleagues could use some more sick leave? And as it reads right now, anytime somebody's running low on sick leave, what I just explained can happen. We recommend adjusting that definition slightly to say that, you know, whenever an employee is running low on sick, vacation, and personal leave, their supervisor can reach out in that situation. Yeah, that is pretty much all I have. I kind of ran through that, so I am definitely open to questions.
Very good. Thank you very much. Any other staff? Comment? Questions? Concerns? Seeing none. Citizens? Concerns? Questions? Seeing none. Thank you. I'd entertain a motion. Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the Personnel Policy Amendments as presented. So moved by Mr. Shannon and seconded by Mr. Thompson, and we'll start right here again, I think.
Thank you for doing this work. Thank you all.
Will this go into effect for all employees? The way I read it, there will be a reduction in hours for a couple of these tenured classifications?
Yes.
There will be some employees who will lose time going forward?
Yes. Three of our, I hate to say least tenured, but three of our newest firefighters who haven't put in four years of service time yet with the city will see a slight reduction in their vacation accrual. One benefit, not necessarily to accrual, but just in our, in the way that we've kind of reshaped our biweekly pay scale is that previously to the transition process, all firefighter employees would work an average of 3,200 hours a year. That includes overtime. And when your, when your annual salary is purely based on overtime, it's hard to take vacation because you can't. Well, you can, but it's more difficult to accrue overtime when you use vacation. So in a way, we made it a little more equitable in that even though some employees' hours are, well, some of their vacation accruals are being reduced in what they learn per month, it is easier for them to go on vacation now just because they're not as dependent on that annual amount.
So it's just three employees that would be affected at this time?
Correct.
And just to reiterate Matt's point, this was talked to specifically with those individuals. So they're aware of that change, and I think obviously they're amenable and understand the reason for the change and sort of the giant, you know, the bigger picture as it relates to what's going on organizationally or departmentally with the transition to the Fire Department, EMS Department.
Just a real quick comment that I'm glad that for those employees that have operated under one set of rules for accruing their vacation and their sick leave, they're not going to be punished by the change if they've exceeded that amount that you are at least making them hold.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
I appreciate that.
I think maybe Sean answered my question. Is this amenable to the troops? I mean, is everybody agreed and it's acceptable by the troops out there?
Yeah.
Because I don't even take care of the people, the workers.
Yeah. I had the chance to sit down with Deputy Chief Jennings and our staff on Friday, and we kind of rolled through it, and everybody seemed excited about the promotions. And they also, they understood that this is just kind of the way we're going.
Thanks.
Matt, thank you for your very detailed analysis. You do a great job on these reports, and it's really appreciated, bud.
Appreciate it.
Anything else? Seeing none? Question? I'm sorry?
I was just wondering if we could hear from some of the actual people affected by this.
Firemen?
Yeah, those are.
People were affected because they went through it. This is something that, you know, they've known as we've worked through this for more than a year now. Been working on it and talking to everybody that there was a change coming and as we brought it all together. Matt and Chris went over it with them. Explained it thoroughly to them. And they all accepted. They read what they were getting and what it was going to be and signing the documents without any trouble. They know what's going on, and it's been talked about for quite a while. And we move into this.
New, yeah. New, new stage.
Thank you.
I'll go ahead and just add to that. One of the challenges that's really not described very well is when our previous Fire EMS employee were actually taking time off. Their burn rate was very high. They were having to take an hour off, or it was actually costing them an hour and a half of actual time. So when you see these numbers shifting slightly, the actual end burn rate for them to take time off really hasn't changed that much. This is more reflective of what we call the 207K or 7K extension change, which is the overtime allowance that we afford for 24-hour staff. Where most employees will get overtime after 40 hours, our employees on the fireside receive it after a two-week of 106 hours. Previously, before this change that was just put in effect, it was very costly for them to take time. So that's one of the reasons we have very high banks of time on the books is because it costs them so much. This really, while you may see a large change in numbers, that number difference in terms of how it affects their ability to time off actually makes it easier for them to take time off, and their time allowance to take time off isn't as reduced as if they were.
Very complicated. Thank you. No, yes. I have a, just a brief appreciation of how those schedules are also complicated on many levels. Other questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none, vote, please.
Voting on a motion to approve the Personnel Policy Amendments as presented. Mackey?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Onto item number 12, COVID Pay. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just quickly, there are two programs that have been discussed internally that I'm bringing forward to you all today. They're twofold. One is a, what I will call a hazard payment. The structure is detailed in the memo, but the broad strokes of it are simply that an employee is eligible for up to $1,000 of bonus pay related to their service during the pandemic time period. And then, secondly, there is a vaccine incentive of up to $500. Again, it's detailed in the memo, but generally, for those employees that provide, the city with documentation that they receive, the full vaccination, whatever that may be, be it Johnson &amp; Johnson or Pfizer or Moderna, they would receive a one-time incentive bonus of $400. And then for the booster shot, that would be an additional $100. So in essence, an employee is eligible for up to $1,500 of related COVID pay. With that, I just want to thank department heads. This is something that we put together, tried to put together late in the game, but that was really more indicative of trying to figure out exactly where we're at financially. Also want to, you know, point out with, I think it was Frank said, keep it simple. Tilly went through the financials to make sure everything was good. And then Chief Naff, I know, was instrumental and provided me some details as far as other cities and comparisons. There's a lot of different ways to skin this cat. But ultimately, I think this is something that is a good program and shows the recognition of the city to the employees for the time period that they worked during these troubling times as we used to hear at one point. So with that, have to answer any questions?
Thank you very much. Any other staff? Citizens? Questions or concerns? Seeing none, I'd go ahead and entertain a motion to discuss.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve a one-time COVID hazard payment in the amount of up to $1,000 and a one-time COVID vaccine incentive up to $500 for full-time city employees effective January 1st, 2022.
Second. Moved by Mr. Thompson and seconded by Mr. Shannon. Questions, concerns, comments? And we'll start down here with Mr. Stevens.
Well, the only comment I have is that, how do I say? I want to say that it's a small amount, and it doesn't even come close to the appreciation, at least I have, and I assume the rest of the council shares that same opinion, the appreciation we have for our employees who had to come here and go out on the streets and work on the sewers and patrol the streets and put out fires. It's just a small token. We appreciate you, that you were here for us.
Am I looking over a projected payout date for these?
If, if, in January, it's our tenure bonus, and then the RCD cap bonus, and then the incentive and all that, that is simply, I don't know, the information. I think I have the memo that the, provide proof of full vaccination, like that in the middle part of February, so that's obviously adequate time for folks that have been on the fence about doing this, but not going into the same anyway. There isn't a drop date on booster at this time, sometimes that is, ultimately, I think that depends on when somebody ends up actually getting the full battery of the job, so that's something that everybody felt right with, a little bit of a professional area, but I think certainly, obviously, allowed for other people to do that.
And will that be, the incentive would be pay on, pay on demand isn't the right phrase, pay on proof, then it would be the following pay period or something of that nature? It wouldn't, wouldn't be lumped together?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's one thing we still need to do, we've been working through, is that there's a lot of accounting side that goes into this, obviously, so we have to set up the GL codes, we have to set up just the internal mechanisms, but again, the intent is that, start of the new year, that that would, that would be the first payment, and then subsequent payments for the incentives would come just as quickly as we get the documentation and can get it.
Is that structured as a bonus?
Yes.
So that, because I know, I'm not sure if it's true in government entities, but in private sector, a bonus is taxed at a higher rate to the employee?
So we've, that's one thing that we've gone through or going through, I think, Tilly, I think it's just taxed as, I think governments are a little bit different.
But it is taxed as regular wages, it's not at a higher bonus rate? Nice, good job, Tilly, thank you. Do we have any idea what our current employee vaccination percentage is?
We don't, I think that's somewhat of our issue beyond the obvious. There are some stipulations that if somebody does get COVID, or rather, if somebody is in close proximity to somebody that has COVID, we're going off of their word that they're vaccinated, the restrictions in terms of when they can return to work are different. Again, there's also the pending federal requirements, it doesn't apply to us, but those are there. So, yeah, that's.
Okay, thank you.
They ask everything.
Very good.
The city employees certainly do a fantastic job taking care of our well-being as citizens, and I think it's only right that we take care of their well-being. So thank you for what you all do, this is the right thing.
I just wanted to clarify that we're not mandating or requiring vaccination, right?
Correct.
This is just an incentive, all right.
Yep.
Appreciate it, thank you guys, and thank you all the city staff. I, I mean, I know, I saw a bunch of you guys out, and we were out in the Zoom and all the craziness, and we made history with all the wildness, and this is definitely very, very well deserved. Thank you guys for doing it.
I've been blessed to have been here for quite a few years, and it is so neat when you have the opportunity to give back to the people that have been giving so much to us and to our families. And I really can't find the words enough to say how proud I am. Sean, thank you, Amber, Frank, Matt, Tilly, Billy, Tilly and Billy, that's good. Anyway, sorry, but I really, I think it's so great, because when Sean mentioned it the other day, and I thought, what a great, great thing to do and tell our employees that you're valued and you're worthwhile, that's kind of typical of this city, so everybody, thank you for doing it. I think it's great. Anything else? I, I'm honored to be the mayor of Bonner Springs, and to serve not only our employees but our citizens, and to see the manner in which we support you. Words can't convey how much we appreciate all that, not only the emergency services, police department, public works, Parks and Rec, administrative, it just doesn't stop. I mean, there's no, no I in team, that sounds, kind of tried to say that, but from, from the people who worked the front door in front of a community center in a fishbowl for almost two years, to the guys out on the front line, or, I'm sorry, men and women out on the front line, we all greatly appreciate it, and thank you very much. Onto the vote, please.
Voting on a motion to approve a one-time COVID hazard payment in the amount up to $1,000 and a one-time COVID vaccine incentive up to $500 for active full-time city employees effective January 1st, 2022. Shannon?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Thompson?
Thank you all, yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Stevens?
Oh, yeah.
Motion passes.
Very good, thank you. Onto item number 13, what obviously everyone must be here for this evening, the resolution to approve city fee updates for 2022. Maybe, maybe not. Staff?
First break, city clerk. Annually, every year, at the end of the year, we review the city fees, and the department heads return the fees that they propose for the next year. Those were included in the agenda, with the exception of in front of each of you is a sheet with some additional water fees that got left out. Are you saying that print's small?
No.
That were left out of the initial, the staff members for each department are here if you have, if anybody has any questions about any of those fees.
Very good. Thank you very much. Any other staff input? Citizens, questions or concerns? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve, where are we, 13th, a resolution amending the city fee schedule as proposed effective January 1st, 2022.
Second.
So moved by Mrs. Gurley and seconded by Mr. Mackey. Questions, concerns, comments, and we'll start down here with Mr. Shannon.
It's hard, but we got to do it if we want our facility to improve and better water, so I'm thrilled to second it. Thanks, guys, for doing it.
There was a lot of changes, not so much increases, but a lot of moving around and combining. A couple, I just did have a quick question on, is Mr. Abart. Come on down. I, I'm curious about the, I noticed that we dropped the charges for impact fees for, I guess for what the larger meters. Is it because we're just not, don't have a need for those, or how are we handling those?
Frank Abart, Public Works Director, we essentially tried to clean this up quite a bit, and you'll notice there was a lot of duplications on those, and the duplications are the ones that we got rid of, and looks like I see them coming up here, so maybe I can.
Let me ask you this question, then, like on the impact fee for three-inch meter.
Yeah, pick one, pick one. Go ahead, yeah, it's a three-inch meter.
Well, you've got eliminate for one, and then on the turbine, you say after remove turbine, does that mean you're not removing that line, but just removing the wording for turbine?
The characterization of a turbine-type meter, yes.
So it's still there.
So it's just a three-inch meter, I just.
So it's still there, the impact fee is.
Right. We don't want to complicate this with a whole bunch of technical terms. Three-inch meter, two-inch meter, one-inch meter.
That answers a lot, because when I was seeing after remove, I thought you meant remove the turbine line as a whole as well, but you were just.
I think I did remove some of those that were duplicates, because they'd have a three-inch component-type meter and a three-inch, I'm looking up, oh, compound, they call them compound, single-litened compound. And, you know, so there's a six-inch meter for that.
So we're still having the system impact.
We have a six-inch meter.
Gotcha.
Let's get rid of the rest of this.
Well, that's.
Infusing, I think, I said simplify, keep it simple.
Well, it is simple.
It, it's getting simpler, getting simpler.
It wasn't simple for me to understand. I appreciate it, Frank, that was.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions, concerns? Seeing none, vote please.
Voting on a motion to approve a resolution amending the city fee schedule as proposed effective January 1st, 2022. Shannon?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good, congratulations, I guess. Onto our reports for this evening, the first of which, the city manager's report. City manager's report.
More of a comment, I suppose, than anything else, but a lot of the things that were on the agenda tonight were things, are things that have been in the works for years. 138 Street comes to mind as far as a project that has been something that is, again, been on the city's radar for years and years and years. We finally have funding to do that, absent some of the concerns of inflationary costs and what have you. This is, this is a project that I know, at the very least, I've been here six years now, it's been, it's been part of that ever since. The Sculpture on the Move, we've been funding sculptures for four years. We put an art policy together, gosh, two years ago now, three years ago. So again, this is something that has just been years on years of trying to create a sense of place in our community.